Let me call to order the Select Board meeting for the town of Eastham for Monday, September 25th. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local Channel 8 and through the town website at www eastham-ma.gov. So, the first thing on our agenda is any public or Select Board information that is not on the agenda. Let me go to the Board first. Suzanne, anything to raise?
No.
Jamie?
Nope.
I have just two things. One, I've received word that Cape Cod Tech is one of 66 schools in Massachusetts that was listed on a, is a school of recognition for its improvement in MCAT scores. So, I want to say congratulations to the administration, the teachers, and the students at Cape Cod Tech. And the other is that, I think Jackie will mention it, we, the Nauset Regional School Committee is asking its council to take a look at the agreement that was signed way back prior to being in Microsoft Word, I guess, that, looking at, in part, how you divvy up the expenses, trying to go to a three-year average in singly, and also having the council look at other things. So, we will be looking hard at seeing what other things the council may be coming up with. So, that's all I have. Well, Suzanne?
I have a question regarding that. Are we able to get, I don't know, quarterly updates on the progress from the committee?
I don't know. I mean, they will probably do most of it in their public session, but there's probably other stuff that they'll do with council. So, yeah, I mean, I can give you whatever we get.
Right. Currently, it's at council.
We all have to vote it at town meeting.
Okay.
It's a town meeting vote.
They cannot change the agreement without us.
I just, I guess I wanted some updates from the committee to us on their progress as they move through it.
Okay.
A typical process in other committees of done updates, usually engage the town staff to work with them, at least town manager, because obviously he has to go through our town meeting and changes in the district agreement affect each of the communities differently. So, usually there's some sort of working group and then we do updates.
Yeah. And we'll let you know what the issues are that they're looking to change. I'm assuming some of it is just old language, like our charter, and then some of it may be meaningful to us, so.
So, the one thing, the major thing from looking at the meetings, they do, they would like to see it go to a three-year moving average.
Rolling, yeah.
Rolling average on the number of students, so, to try and reduce the impact on the town, so, jumps up and jumps down and so forth. So, the major part, I think they're in agreement, who knows what else? You never know what lawyers will find.
It's just, I think, since it's a big issue, to change one thing requires the same process as you look at the whole agreement. So, what their council is saying is, this is a good opportunity to look at the whole agreement, so we should do that.
Right. Okay. So, the next thing on the agenda, we're going to change the agenda a bit, we'll go to the personnel.
Code?
Code, that's what it was. I was looking for the magic word. The Personnel Code and.
Lori Barg.
Lori, go ahead, it's all yours.
I really don't have much to say. I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is just our annual update of the Personnel Code. You've seen 99.9% of it before. Some minor changes, clarification in some language, updating Town Administrator to Town Manager, and the inclusiveness of pronouns was changed. So, largely, that's what I, oh, the most important part, the salary table. People wanted to get paid.
Yes.
So, that's in there, too.
You added the new, the new holiday as well.
And the new holiday, yes.
New holiday.
It largely mirrors the Eastham Employees Association collective bargaining agreement.
Right.
Because these are similar positions.
Yeah. I have one question, is if you go to your page 14, and it's page 39 of 89 on our, our packet, under 13.0, use of private vehicles, under a non-changed portion, it said that the annual, the rate, the rate will be.
Adjusted.
Six and a half cents less than the federal rate. And then you go down in what we added, that the mileage will be reimbursed at the mileage rate of the IRS. And that's also in the.
Policy.
Further down on page 37, in the back, I just don't know if they're different, and if they are different, we should probably clear.
They are different. It looks like the town rate is less than the IRS rate. I wasn't aware that that was a practice, I should have read that closer.
That we did before.
Do you know, Rich?
Yeah, I think the actual practices mirror the IRS rate, so, we should just have that language.
We'll strike that.
And actually, we had talked about that when we reviewed a draft, so, maybe a future version would probably eliminate that policy altogether within the Personnel Code and make it a town manager's policy that we have, that's subject to change at the discretion of the town manager, because things like that change from time to time.
Yeah.
So, I'll just strike that line, where it shows the town's rate is six cents, six and a half cents less.
Suzanne or Jamie, any other, any questions? None? Do we need to, we need to vote on this?
And sign it.
Vote, excuse me.
There's no signature page.
Do I?
Signature page? So, we're just voting? Just, all right.
Vote, no need to sign. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the Personnel Code with the amendment?
So, moved. Second.
In a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yes?
Yes. Aye.
Opposed? None? Look at that, you get to go home early.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Paul, for allowing me to skip my turn.
I had nothing to do with it.
Paul, I know, you owe him five minutes, that's all, sometime in the week.
I got plenty of time for Paul.
One of these days, I'll need your help moving something heavy.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have a great night. All right. Well, I think the next item on the agenda is the strategic plan with Paul.
Good afternoon. So, believe it or not, our five-year strategic plan is going to expire at the end of this fiscal year. So, we are going to embark on updating the plan. And so, I just wanted to give you an update on what the work plan would be, and then answer any questions, and kind of make sure we're, staff's on the same page with the Select Board and with the Strategic Planning Committee. So, the focus of the update is really going to be centered on the, kind of validating the strategies and updating the action items. So, I think we have a good plan. The overarching principles, the focus areas, the goals, you know, from a staff level, we feel they're all still valid and they still have merit, and I think that's been reinforced by all of the planning effort we've been doing in the interim five years, especially the tee time work, the extensive amount of outreach we did and community input we got. I think everything we've seen and then, you know, all the various other things that have been going on, I think it's just validated and reinforced that those principles, those goals are still, still what, at the heart of the community. So, the approach is really not to touch those, and, like I said, really look at the strategies, make sure they're still valid, and the action items. And what we want to do is, we anticipate, kind of, new, three new strategy areas, and I should say, everything really falls into two broad focus areas in the plan. It's environmental issues and community character issues broadly. So, we do anticipate that we'll add in some more strategies for wastewater, because our planning has come a long way, and it's really, you know, coming to fruition. And climate adaption and energy use are two huge areas, which, again, the last five years are really coming to the forefront. We need to, you know, address those two issues. And then accessibility has been something that's important, has always been important, but we did recently go through our ADA compliance planning, and so, we wanted to include that. So, those are kind of three areas where we want to add to and bolster. And the other thing we want to do is bring, we have, the town has a lot of individual management plans. We have a harbor management plan, we have a housing plan, we have an open space rec plan, a lot of stuff going on. All of those plans have action items. So, the process is really going to be, at the staff level, is to go through all the action items in the strategic plan and these various subplans, update the status, completed, in progress. Some of these action items have been sort of abandoned, because we've looked at them and said they're not feasible. So, we want to get a hold of that and then do the same thing for all the action items in the other plans. And then, working with the Strategic Planning Committee, just go through the process of evaluating what's left to do and what action items in those subplans should be kind of promoted, elevated into the five-year plan. So, at the end of all this, when you go through the updated strategic plan, we'll kind of have the top of the top from all of the various plans. So, when you look at that plan, that's really what the focus of what the staff work should be focused on, and that, you know, in theory should reflect what the budget aims are and what the budget requests are and so forth. And obviously, we want that all to be in alignment with the Select Board's goals. It's a pretty tall order, to be honest with you. So, we want to get this done, have it substantially done in time for next May's town meeting, so at least we can present a solid update of here's basically what the update is going to be, what we've done, and then have it officially ready for next July, so it kind of syncs up with the fiscal year and we get on the right track. So, the plan is, staff's already working on cataloging all the action items. We have a monthly work session laid out, and then the strategic plan will be reconvening, and we want to hold at least a monthly meeting and try to schedule that the work will be done, kind of structured around each strategy. And we're trying to do that so that we can, you know, make the most efficient use of everyone's time, so, really, schedule each month, go through five strategy items that are in the plan, and then go through and methodically go through each action item, update, discussion, and just kind of move through as efficiently as we can. And then, the behind-the-scenes work will just be shuffling this all together and updating the narrative where it needs to be done and so forth. So, really, starting with, I think we're going to have a kickoff meeting, reconvene the Strategic Planning Committee, I think possibly next Monday, and then get going. So, that's generally the game plan.
Anything, Suzanne?
I have one question. How does, how do these plans interact with a local comprehensive plan? Not that I'm saying we should take on taking on a local comprehensive plan, but.
Yeah.
Since you're here and probably know the answer, I figured I would ask, since some neighboring towns have recently taken it on, and I'm a little unclear what the difference between a strategic plan and a local comprehensive plan is, and if we need one.
Well, our approach has been to use the strategic plan as our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And what we're going to try to do is, when the update is done, we're going to submit the strategic plan to the Cape, the Cape Cod Commission kind of oversees the updates of those plans, and there's a, there's a outline of what should be in those plans. So, we're really overlapping those two things.
Okay.
So, my approach is try to kind of get two for one, and I think we're going to cover all of the, I think we'll be able to do it. The main difference is, you know, a local comprehensive plan is usually little, little larger scope, and it's more like a 20, 25-year outlook. There's some merit to that, but in my experience, my personal experience, those plans usually are forgotten and sit on the shelf, and we have a comprehensive plan that really no one looks at.
Well.
The strategic plan, I mean, they get looked at, but the strategic plan, I just, I think it's been working very well for us, and I think it keeps us on point, and it focuses our efforts on what's the priority. So, we don't have plans to really do a proper comprehensive plan right now. I think we're trying to meld the two, make the most efficient use of the staff time and.
Paul, is it, it's not a requirement, or, talk about the requirement of the commission and others to have an LCP, and is it needed for any grants that we need to apply for?
There's nothing that strictly requires us to have one. Sometimes it does play into whether we're eligible for grants. I haven't seen where we've been negatively impacted so far in my time here in Eastham. It hasn't really been a factor, but.
Right.
I think some planning agencies off Cape in particular have requirements for their member communities to participate in an LCP process. But, and years ago, I don't know if you recall, Jackie, it used to be, a lot of grants would require you to have an LCP or submit it as part of your application process. And I haven't, like you said, Paul, I haven't seen that to be a thing in the last, you know, 10 years.
And again, we're hoping that the information in the strategic plan will mirror the LCP to the extent that we will get a blessing of sorts from the commissioner.
Yeah. We did go through, I think it was last year, we were looking at, like, what are the essential elements in the LCP versus what's in the strategic plan, and we kind of just did a matrix, and it was, we were pretty much.
So close.
Getting everything on there that I think with some minor adjustments, we can.
I kind of figured that was the case.
And I think for me, it's the, I, we've done a lot of planning in the past seven years, and the difference between us and some other towns is that we are looking at the planning and operationalizing it in town. So, we're really trying to make that planning either real or discarded. You know, like, okay, so, we were going to do this, we've tried, it's not working, we're going to move on to Part B. And so, I think, you know, and I'm not saying other towns don't do it, but I, we have, most towns, we pay for so many studies, and then no one ever reads them. So, I think sort of trying to get the strategic plan to be a visual, task-oriented list of what's in all the other plans is helpful, at least to us. I know it's helpful to staff as we try and mobilize our energy and say, what are we going to focus on? You know? And it's just more useful than some of these 352-page things that, you know, you get beyond the executive summary, which says we have to have a land management plan and we have to have, you know?
Yeah.
So, but.
I think that's what towns have focused towards. If, to the extent you need a plan or something for a grant, it's more targeted nor specific to a land use, land management plan.
Right.
Or a housing production plan, which you already have, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, you just incorporate those by reference into your.
Yeah.
And so, the focus has been more action-oriented instead of long-term focus.
And, and we are, I think, part of the strategic planning goals that didn't get completed last time, were around some land management conservation goals that we have to, that we've asked Shayna to address in this plan, with Hillary now, and the Conservation Agent now that they're here. So, we'll get more staff attention on it, and so, I think it'll, it'll help us fill out that portion of it nicely for this round.
Yeah. And like, Rich, that's actually the approach, is to incorporate all these subplans, which all of them have really been updated in the last five years, and some of them are just getting, final, open space rec plan is being updated now, so I think they'll all be incorporated as the strategic plan. So, I think we'll be able to justify that approach.
The problem is going to be, I think, there's so much data, and it's going to be, this process is going to be a little bit different than the one we did in the past, where it was more committee-led. We're really going to be looking for staff to go in, present their case, present what they think should come off and what they think should come on, and then we vote and we move forward, so that our draft plan is tight and we keep on a schedule so that we can actually.
Get it done.
Get there in the eight months that we have.
Yeah.
So, hopefully.
Yeah, no, I think everything's been said that I would have said, so, yeah, I'm full support of that approach.
The only thing, right now, we have a tiny strategic planning committee. You changed the charge, we voted on a charge change. So, we're going to start with the tiny committee, and then we're going to start recruiting members that we'll probably bring to you for approval through the search committee to try and beef that committee up a little.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda would be the intersection improvement plan. Jackie, we have pictures, but you have a memo that you want to let us know what's happening.
Yes. I'm sorry that the memo and the design plans for the two intersections that we have designed did not get into your packet, but I wanted a full board to be here for this, because I know this is, Art and Amy are both very, very interested in the intersection improvement, to say the least. And so, in 2020, basically, the town identified, and by the town, I mean, at that point, it was the DPW Director with the Police Chief, Fire, and probably, perhaps, Paul, I don't know whether, yes, I'm sorry, to take a look at what intersections in town had safety needs, and we identified 13 of them. So, it's daunting, because each intersection improvement has to be designed, and then it has to move into construction, so it has to get on our capital plan, and we have to get funding for it. So, we chose the first two, which is Bridge Road and Haringbrook Road, and Nauset Road and Old Orchard Road. Those plans are now in draft, final form, and hopefully, we will be putting at least one of them in the capital plan coming up in 2025, this next budget round. Hope, maybe two, but we're at least get one, so that we can get one completed. And then, my idea was to design two at a time, so if we construct and then design the next two, we can get through all 13 within, hopefully, six years or so, five years if we're lucky. So, I'm actually just putting this in for your information, so that you can see the two designs that we've got, and then I'll be talking to the Chief, Paul, John Roughly, DPW, we'll be trying to prioritize the next two, and then I will bring, before we go forward with those, I'll bring those, that recommendation back to you. I just wanted you to see what the choices are. But I definitely want Adam, as Police Chief, to weigh in on any, they all have, they all need safety improvements, we know that, but which are the most critical to start with next, so.
So, Kayla, will send that memo out to us?
Yep.
Good?
Yeah, it should be in your email.
I didn't, I hadn't received it.
It should be in your email, I didn't see it.
It just went out this afternoon, because we realized.
She sent it to personal, her personal emails.
Oh, okay.
Came in a personal email, okay.
Okay. If you hadn't seen it on there, okay.
I'll look at that. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Can we ask a question or two?
Yeah, you can ask questions.
Yeah.
I was wondering, in, you have the Haringbrook Road and the Bridge Road, and it's going to make that turn, so it'll be more of like a direct 90-degree left-right turn. And then, I was wondering what might happen with the rest of that space?
It looks like a monument, R and R Monument, it says.
No, that's.
R and R.
There is a little triangle that does say R and R Monument, but I just meant, like, in general, like, this is the path of the road, and then if we're going to move it.
It adds green space.
Okay.
There's no monument. Monument is a marker. When they use monuments on a survey plan, it's the marker of the layout.
I thought it was a monument for the old intersection.
No, they, it's a little.
Here used to lie.
No, it's a little granite thing.
That's your chairman.
And then, so, it looks like Bridge Road will be, require, like, some significant, like, digging, moving stuff, and the Old Orchard one, is that also going to require repaving, or is it like?
Yeah. It's a total intersection improvement, we'll do it all at the same time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like the, yeah, the Old Orchard one looks really nice.
Yeah, you're changing the course of the road entirely in some places.
I guess it was, it's more subtle than the Bridge Road one.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, maybe we can just paint some different lines on it.
It's also less expensive by two-thirds.
Yeah.
It's literally a third the cost of the other one.
It looks like they're just tapering it in.
Tapering more?
Yeah.
Making it more.
So, some are.
A harder turn. Oh, so you can't just like.
And when you come into the road.
Oh, I see, thanks.
From Nauset, you're perpendicular.
Yeah, okay, so it's an actual.
And again, it's like the, the older intersections where you're merging are more dangerous, so you're trying to make it more clear that you're the one who has to stop and merge.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
Yeah. It's interesting, though, right?
Yeah.
Road design has changed a lot.
It has.
And we'll let Effie know about their flower plot.
Yes, and we may have, on the bigger one, we may have an opportunity to.
To put flowers.
Really upgrade, like, put them in the ground.
Yeah, like, on the side of it.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, buy the monument.
Buy the monument?
Sorry.
We're going to have a.
Just relabel it.
Jamie's in charge of designing the monument.
Maybe we could have a design contest, my favorite.
There's going to be a huge discussion about Eastham putting in a monument.
No.
Sorry.
We're good.
But, yeah, so Effie could do a whole flower thing right here, that would be really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did discuss this with him and our consultant, and he said, yeah, it's going to give us more green space in that area, no doubt about it.
One consideration, I guess there's one, a driveway there, but also, do we want to consider, like, a path through it? Because it seems like something that people on bikes or on foot are going to just cross through anyway, they might not go up to that, especially if it's flat and grassed, right?
You could still make a little island.
You could still make a little island, it just seems likely that people.
It'd be a foot or bike path.
Are going to be like, oh, this is shorter, I don't want to go to the stop sign.
Okay.
Just something to consider when.
They're going to walk that way anyway.
They're probably going to walk that way anyway.
It's basically going to follow that, there's a curve right there, a little bit paved spot, that people have done in that intersection to make, come perpendicular, that's where the cuts go.
Right.
All right. Any other questions on that? I mean.
And I have to send that design out to a couple of the butters that have asked for it, so I will do that.
And then, we will take it up next meeting, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
Jackie, I'll turn to you, Wellfleet MOA, you have a little update for us.
Yeah, this is like the Jackie meeting tonight.
This is a Jackie meeting.
So, the Wellfleet MOA, basically, it's an intermunicipal, intermunicipal agreement between Eastham and Wellfleet on what the terms are to extend our Eastham water system into Wellfleet to, at this point, connect the Drive-In and Maurice's campground to our system. So, that's been designed, it's fully permitted, and we're at the final stage, which is finalizing the agreement with Wellfleet. It is not ready for your signature and vote tonight, because Wellfleet has requested some changes, so Rich and I have to have a conversation and see if we can, you know, come to exact terms and bring it back to you. But it's very close, and this project should, if we get this agreement signed, go into construction in November.
Wow. That's great. This November.
That's great. Look forward to seeing what Wellfleet wants changed.
That's the fastest.
This November.
This November.
Well, it's been in design for two years.
Yeah.
Two years, and we've been talking about it for probably three.
Have we not talked about it that long?
Yes. Yeah, so it seems fast, because Jackie Tupper, our engineer from Environmental Partners, we had to move it forward quickly, because the DEP is starting the roadwork in Wellfleet.
That's right, and we want to get it done before.
So, it actually got, went out to bid as a part of their project, so.
To save money, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Oh, sweet.
All right, we've done.
And move it along.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're digging it through.
Awesome. Okay.
It'll be good, and that will be, just for information to people, that will be going from the end of Eastham's waterline up Route 6 to West.
Right.
That's the line. Okay. We'll look forward to that next, next meeting. We've done Personnel Code, so committee appointments and resignations, let's go with the resignations first. Leonardo Germanara from, and Diane Malone from the Cultural Council. Leonardo Germanara from, and Diane Malone from the Cultural Council, Eric Shannon from the Eastham Elementary School, and Estella Edmondson from the Human Services Committee. Those are resignations, and I think we do have a motion to accept those.
Can I just add one, so James Cohen.
I was just gonna ask that.
I was gonna add, talk about that one later, 'cause he passed away, rather than a resignation.
He should be included in a resignation, but I didn't know how to like, put that on the agenda, so.
Those four are resignations, and sadly, James Cohen passed, passed away and therefore will not be on the Old Town Center. It's interesting, I'm not sure how that works to accept someone's death, but we'll go through, by the way, we have a motion to accept those resignations and create those vacancies in those.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, none, that's done. Now, we have three appointments. Mary Jane Samuel for Human Services, Cheryl Gale for Council on Aging, and Devon O'Rourke for Eastham Elementary School. I'll say one thing on Eastham Elementary School, since it's elected position, it's a vacancy. We fill it up until the next election, so it will be an open seat.
Devon did run this past, he did recently run.
He, he, he did run, he ran for the school committee. And he's on it again, and he'll have to, if he wants to stay on, get the 30 signatures and run again.
These are all great, I mean, we're lucky to have these people on there, definitely.
Yeah, we have a motion to make these appointments.
I'll make a motion to accept the appointments as listed in the agenda.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, none, that's done, great. Now it's back to Jackie again.
Manager's report.
Hold on, let's get it up here.
We had a lot of random things in this one.
Yeah, well.
They didn't exactly connect, but they're all.
Yeah, it's, it's all right, we.
It's all there.
That's all that matters. It's like the second to last page.
Wait, so.
You can just go all the way down.
Were you gonna say anything else?
Yeah, I just blew it.
Oh, here, Jamie's.
All right, Jamie, you got it.
I got you, that's okay.
Hey, Jackie.
So, oh, Biggie on the Capitol Projects, the Town Hall Exterior Renovation, the low bidder withdrew their bid. And so we went out, we have gone out to bid again. So we held, all of the subbids were held, they all agreed to hold their subbid. So we're just looking for the general contractor to bring it all together, and we think we can get back on schedule, so. You're gonna have a meeting in October, your October 16th meeting will be a bit of a workshop on our draft targeted watershed management plan because it is final at this point. And we will be looking for a vote on that. And if you do vote to approve it, it will immediately then go to the DEP and into our permitting phase. So it's a very big, very long-awaited milestone for us. The Rock Harbor Dredge has, this is good news, has not only been permitted and approved, but we did receive an advantageous bid, a bid lower than our estimated costs. And coupled with the grant, that's gonna drop the cost of that project pretty dramatically. So that will save our taxpayers some money, we won't have to borrow the full amount right now. The ARPA Cape, Outer Cape Behavioral Health and Health Project went out to bid, we did accept bids. And I'm now negotiating with two out of three, so we definitely will come back to you with those bids. We also have a proposal from the Outer Cape Health Agents and Outer Cape Community Solutions for the opioid money for all four Outer Cape towns, which should come to you again in October for your comments and consideration. And we'll see if, if that gets approved, we can move forward and start ramping up that program at the first of the year.
So that might goes back into the health, mental health services that are gonna be offered, is that?
No, they're two separate. So there's been a working group on the Outer Cape, the four health agents, and as well as some of the experts that deal with addiction and, and related issues, and the first responders. They've been meeting for probably the past six to eight months, and they've come up with a formal proposal for all four towns. So you'd be accepting one program that all four towns would put their opioid money into, into it.
Would it still be run for Outer Cape Health?
No.
Okay, but this one, the ARPA, is?
No.
Outer Cape Behavioral Health?
The Outer Cape Behavioral Health Project is led by the town of Eastham, and it's all four Outer Cape towns.
Okay, okay.
It's not Outer Cape Health, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, just checking.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I guess I just, it would be nice to see something coming out of all of this that is a little more accessible and front-facing. I guess I feel like what happens is like, these concepts happen and they exist, but I don't, there, there's like, the contact point of like, actually, people in Eastham with addiction issues having a place or a person that they can reach directly out to. Or that a third party could connect them with, should they need an intervention, and like, how that will all come together, the actual like, connection.
I think they'll be able to explain that to you.
Great.
It looks like a good proposal, it's creative, it's not traditional. I would not call it a traditional proposal.
I don't think it should be, yeah.
But I think it's very thoughtful and definitely was crafted by people who have a lot of direct line experience with people experiencing these issues. It also has a component that is diversionary for youth.
Great.
And that's, I think, one of the more creative elements of it. But I think, I think you'll actually like it. I mean, I was really a little surprised, but also pleased with it, and I think you will be too. It's just kind of in draft form, and I want them to formally present it to you, so. But that has to be accepted by all four towns in the same form. So this is our first challenge, but, you know, I think, hopefully, we can do it.
And with the, it's gonna be outer, so it'll be Eastham, Wellfleet, Tropey Town?
That's right.
And is it accepted by the select boards or does the town meeting require?
The select boards in all four towns, and then we can expend the money. So they are, they're similar, but they're two distinct projects. One, the Behavioral Health and Nursing is 18 months. And basically, it's trying to give us an indication of whether or not these services are necessary, as, as Jamie said, can be targeted and useful to our community. And we have to sort of figure that out within the next year to 18 months. So if we determine it together that they are, and we think that they're useful for residents, then we would probably want to fund those within our human service budget on, as an ongoing project. So just keep that in mind.
That it would move forward.
The opioid funding, I think, will continue annually, but we can probably tweak that, you know, we have time to tweak that 'cause that's a 20-year, I think it's a 20-year project. So the money will come in over the next 20 years or the next 18 years, because we already received some.
Great.
So one is funded, and one is funded under ARPA for only a short time for us to assess it and determine whether it's useful. Yeah, but we'll bring those back once I negotiate with the low bidders. We can, I'll bring the ARPA project back, and you can ask more specific questions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And Jerry mentioned the regional school agreement, I think those are the big highlights.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, this is yours.
Musical iPods.
We're good, we're all right. Moving along rather quickly, next on, let me get to the agenda again.
Do you want to talk about any budget stuff, Rich? You don't have to, but if you want to, you could.
Sure, we'll have plenty of time to talk about budget stuff, but I guess since you're asked, I will update you. We are biting the bullet and doing our S and P rating call next week, getting an update. So it's where the rubber meets the road for us, and all our efforts over the last three years to improve our financial position and practices hopefully result in an upgrade, but that's, you know, we've got one step to go, and hopefully, we can get there.
Yeah, I know you work hard on that, so good luck with that.
We've been looking at that for a while.
Yes.
That's excellent. And that is in two weeks, Rich?
Next week.
Next week.
Next week, but in, when do you expect?
Next week, and then it'll probably take them a couple of weeks to.
Couple of weeks to get back.
Through their checklists.
That was my question, all right. Any new upcoming agenda item or follow-up does anyone have? All right, move on to the minutes, the minutes of the 21st of August, I think. Let me get to the minutes. Yes, it is 21st of August. Any corrections, additions, or whatever to them? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st, 2023.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, none, minutes are approved.
I have one thing.
Yes, Suzanne?
We got an email about doing a Halloween event again.
Yeah.
On the Green, and I'm very excited for this. Unknown if I will be able to attend, but I was very pleased to have, to see that, to have that happen again.
Yes, yes.
I thought it was great, and as a kid with few Halloween options, I appreciate the fact that there's more Halloween options, and then it gets people out, and.
Social.
It's social, and I, yeah.
Yeah, loved it.
Whoever is currently spearheading that.
That's your recreation department.
Yes, yes.
Agreed, yeah.
And Kayla has arranged for the Town Hall to have a Town Hall table. So we are.
Oh, good.
We are designing costumes as we speak, and we're going to be dressing up and doing the whole thing.
Maybe I'll skip for a little while that day, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess it's, the email said, if you're interested in participating, let her know by October 14th. And so I guess if there's other people who are interested in participating.
Yeah, setting up a table, if you're a neighborhood or you're, you know, whatever, organization.
Did that get shared on Facebook?
I don't know yet.
That might be.
Not yet, I think that was Katie's just like, planning on who's gonna actually, like, if they have interest in vendors setting up, I can touch base with them just to make sure, 'cause we should probably set up like, an event. Yeah, or even a call for vendors.
Yeah.
Of like, oh, are you interested in participating in our Halloween event?
And what are the hours on that again?
Just three to five on Saturday, October 28th.
In, in the past, they've had judging and stuff, so they've asked, sometimes the rec committee or the rec department asks members of the select board to try and show the flag to be judges, et cetera. So potentially be ready for requests.
I don't know if I'm capable of making those kinds of decisions.
I'll try to scoot out of work, play a little hooky, I wanna go.
All right, any other, other business or correspondence, anyone?
Maybe we should wear costumes on the Monday, October 30th meeting.
Oh, there you go, it's, it's only in half an hour.
Costumes, I love it, okay.
Just saying.
You have, I'm sure you have a closet full.
I do.
And God knows, we know Art has.
Yes, Art will show me off.
Art has them too, all right. And our next meeting is Monday, the 16th of October, 5:30. Sadly, I'll be on an airplane, but you guys will do great without me. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion, I move adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.